That's the goal.
Yeah, testing, testing.
All right, Pat, well, thank you for your patience. Are you ready for me?
We're ready for you.
Yes.
Fantastic, fantastic. All right. My apologies for our lateness. Thank you for everyone's patience. Uh, we will call our policy meeting on April fourth to order. And we'll begin with any public comment. Fantastic. Move on to next agenda items, which is the approval of the minutes from the, uh, March meeting.
Goodbye me.
All right, bye me.
Fantastic. Goodbye me as well. Tricia unanimously approved. Thank you very much. And that will bring us to a number of discussion items. And, uh, I see our team is here in place, including some other, uh, very important folks. Uh, the first item that we're going to be discussing this evening is policy zero one six six. The Title Nine and Sex Discrimination Procedures. And, uh, I don't know if there's any conversation to happen from our, uh, central admin team. This is a policy that we've been discussing and looking at for... I have to apologize. Are we on speaker?
No.
This is just the acoustics? Okay, my apologies, good folks. I just felt like it was coming back at me as well, as I was saying. So, um, policy zero one one six dash P, uh, a new policy with a new policy number. Uh, however, it is reflective of the current practice that we've been doing in the district. Um, and I'm looking at Lily and I'm looking at Amanda as our DASAC coordinator for, uh, I want to say two years now, or at least a year and a half that this has been publicly available. Am I correct, Lily? So to my board colleagues, questions, comments, uh, additions, grammatical corrections that we need to engage in, anything of that nature?
I went through it today and I didn't... What is happening? Why is, why is like my phone like, I don't know, making noise? Um, anyway, uh, I went through it. I want to, um, get it up if I can. And I didn't see anything in the neighborhood of, um, uh, you know, anything that had to do with, with editing the policy itself. I did have one question, um, that is not related to, it's not directly related to policy, uh, and maybe it's a matter for curriculum. But, you know, the discussion of the ways in which students will be educated about, um, you know, how to respond either as a target or as a bystander. You know, I would be interested in knowing, you know, exactly how that is happening.
Um, if you mean not only how to respond, but how to make a report as well.
Right, yeah.
Um, Pat, do you want to add to those questions that I, um, asked on?
I, I do not have any additional questions to add.
So a response to that, sort of how to respond and/or how do our students make an initial report should, um, unfortunately their experience call for that? Thank you, Ms. Lily Talke for joining us.
Absolutely.
That is one of the best.
So there are a number of different ways in which students, um, can, actually in which folks can make reports around sexual harassment or any possible Title Nine complaints. There are a number of posters that are throughout our spaces. And there are a couple of different kinds of those posters. There are ones that are multi-colored and that I'd be happy to just send to the board so you can see each of these. I believe we've shared them in the past, but it's been a while, so it could be helpful to, to see again. Um, and you see those actually in all of our bathrooms and all of our secondary spaces. So, for example, you know, we were here over the weekend, our family was here over the weekend to see The Little Mermaid, which was great. By the way, we walked into the restroom at Culp and there was one of the signs, there's a QR code that has a reporting form, so folks can utilize their telephones to simply, um, pull up the camera app and it will take them directly to that reporting form. Um, there's another form of a poster that was designed by a couple of student interns. That's part of the I Support Survivors Toolkit that is, um, around the school district. Um, and then there's also a staff reporting form, um, with a QR code that all of our secondary teachers have hanging in all of their classrooms as well. So staff can fill that out and it'll indicate, you know, I either experienced something or I need support in helping a student who has disclosed something. Um, so there are those. Then there's also, um, the official, there's like an official form that's just for sexual harassment, which is for staff that's in our sexual harassment policy. Um, there's also on our website, there's a sexual harassment page that's relatively prominent, um, that has all of those forms as well for reporting. Um, there's also our contact information. Um, and then we do trainings every year for all ICSD employees. And we talk about, um, sexual harassment labor law and we do that training. We also talk about Title Nine and we talk about Aaron's Law, which is the curriculum element. Um, and so that was adopted, uh, New York State was the thirty-seventh state in two thousand nineteen to, um, sign on to Aaron's Law. And Aaron's Law is a K eight um, child sexual abuse prevention curriculum law. So it requires us to ensure that we are educating young people and providing resources and supports um, around, you know, the signs of child sexual abuse. And, um, we are still in the midst of a uh, K through five health curriculum rewrite right now, um, where we have taken some of the big ideas, bless you. And we are focusing on some key areas and we're collaborating with the Advocacy Center to develop this. So we have our secondary health teachers actually writing it and getting feedback from elementary teachers. And we're working with Lynn Stack and others at the Advocacy Center. Some of the key areas are around consent and boundaries, and that's starting in kindergarten.
Okay.
A question for me. I know that, um, one of our board reps has been actively involved in part of this as well, right?
Yeah.
Can you speak to that involvement and that work?
Sure. So Mary Grover, the amazing Mary Grover, and I meet regularly with a group of students and folks from the Advocacy Center. And we meet at different times. Sometimes it's after school, sometimes it's during the school day, sometimes it's during lunch and we get pizza. And we focus on things not only within Ithaca High School, but also district-wide in terms of supporting sexual harassment and assault prevention and response. Uh, and so we just had a meeting with Swiss as well and we're combining our efforts. So for example, we have, um, Mary was awesome and already reserved a space, but there will be, um, for Take Back the Night, which is April twenty-eighth. Um, this group, um, that meets regularly along with Swiss are going to be hosting a poster making and pizza session in Culp Lounge from four to six. And then, um, you know, the Advocacy Center has put on our, on their poster that there will be marches that will be starting from different places. And I think High School is one of the places that it will start. So people from the community will meet out on Keuga Street and walk down to the Take Back the Night, um, march. And that's really focused around supporting, uh, folks who are survivors of sexual abuse or relationship violence and, um, and serving as allies. It's for allies, it's for survivors. Um, it's really a wide range. Um, and so that'll be at, uh, seven o'clock on the comments.
I have one other question, and it turns out that I also have a couple edit things that I had forgotten.
Great, I have it pulled up, so I can make them.
But the, the other question has to do with, um, just about gathering information, uh, um, through surveys, discussions and other mechanisms. So are there surveys happening?
The most recent survey that was implemented was actually from our student board reps. I'm asking about, um, what's currently happening in relationship to sexual harassment? We also have our, um, oh my goodness, Carrie, I am blanking on the name of the survey. It is our Culture and Climate Clyde Survey, um, which is implemented Clyde.
Clyde?
Clyde, yeah. It's a requirement, but it's also really valuable data about student experiences. Um, and it really runs the gamut in terms of student experience. Um, and that's, that's ultimately the way most school districts gather a lot of that information.
And then my edits are this. Now, um, under, uh, reporting incidents. Right. Page number is two. Um, of, yeah, of the regulation. Oh, one more. Anyway, I've come a long way in accepting the use of the pronoun they, uh, when in the olden days, it would require a singular pronoun. But when it's possible to make agreement by just changing the wording a little, I like to do that. So the question I have is under, um, that, uh, the last sentence of, what did I say it was? Um, reporting incidents, was reporting incidents? Reporting incidents, there it is. It says, um, let's see. Okay, if a staff person is unsure of the reporting procedures, they are expected to inquire. Can we say if staff persons are unsure, they are expected to inquire?
I apologize. Are we talking the same document? Zero one one six dash P?
No, dash R. Yes.
But it's still zero one one six or is it?
Zero, zero, zero one one five. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, okay.
All right, so I want to hold on to that for a second because we're still on zero one one six.
Okay, all right. And then I have another one that's, yeah.
Which is a new policy that we have created to make sure that we are keeping our policy in line with our district policies. So zero one one six, for the most part, we are, are, we have been trying to implement as much as possible. So in that policy, the first one, which is
Right.
seventeen pages.
Right.
Which we have debated multiple times or edited and had conversations, had students look at. Are there additional edits to zero one six before we send to the poll board for discussion and for conversation? There would be a first reading, there's still would be time for conversation, editing, things of that nature.
Yeah, I, I was fine with this. I went through this. I mean, a lot of the language comes from governmental entities.
And influenced by our own practices and best practices. All right, so hearing no additional comments right at this moment in time for zero one one six, Title Nine and Sex Discrimination Procedures, that we would be voting to pass on to the board for a first reading. I call the votes. All in favor? Fantastic. So Tricia, that will be on an upcoming agenda. We do not want to specify, given the time that we have. But within the next couple of weeks, we'll try to find room for zero one one six, Title Nine and Sex Discrimination Procedures to be on the board agenda for a first reading. Let's do zero one one five and zero one one five dash R together. One is the policy, one is the procedure. Thank you very much, Ms. Talke. greatly appreciated. And that is the Student Harassment and Bullying Prevention. Before we transition, my apologies, Ms. Talke, if you can send us any, um, documents that have been in bathrooms or that support students, uh, be very important for us to know as well. Thank you very much. Mr. Manu Verba, so good to see you. Thank you very much. Do you have anything that you want to say about either of these two policies?
I think that what you see before you, uh, represents all of the changes, uh, that we discussed at the last policy meeting. Um, I'd like to thank Emily and Tricia and Marta in our office for collaborating on that and making sure we, we got all of the, the changes made. We also did consult with, um, BS and K, our attorney firm, who, um, let us know that it, there is redundancy around some of the legal language. So we can just say that it is prohibited, um, because that is by law.
Board colleagues, um, I know we have some grammatical things that we're going to get to in a second.
In the R, yes.
It's in the R, yes. Uh, any questions about the content of the policy? We discussed this at our last policy committee, so I would invite the public to go take a look at that. Um, the minutes and/or the video of that meeting to have, you know, some additional context if they're looking for. And I realize I'm not talking into the mic. I apologize. That reverb back to me is making me uneasy, but we'll, we'll get there.
The content's fine.
Yes.
Okay, so then I had in the, uh, under reporting incidents, I had that suggestion for making pronoun antecedent agreement happen because we can.
And so that was on page two, report incidents.
Right, last sentence.
Last sentence.
So changing a staff person to staff persons are.
I, um, yeah, I wanted to, I had just looked at that and I wanted to, further modify it, um, by just saying we could simplify it further by, by saying any staff person unsure of the reporting procedure is expected to inquire about how to proceed.
By seek, by speaking with a supervisor. Then change the there, if we're going to make it all singular.
Or we could say, I just, yeah, we, yes, that's fine, but I don't, I don't think we need if.
Right, yeah, I, I agree. Just, yeah, sure. Yep, if any staff person is, oh, how did you put it again, Pat?
Any, any staff person unsure of the reporting procedure is expected to inquire about, about how to proceed.
By speaking with a supervisor.
A supervisor.
Tricia, are you catching that?
Any staff person unsure of the reporting procedure is expected to inquire about how to proceed by speaking with a supervisor. And we will assume that they picked the right supervisor.
Yeah.
Or we could, we could say.
Well, I think at some point in time, we're going to have to reconcile changes in grammar and language with students' lived experience. I don't know that this is the meeting to make that happen. Um, the idea of using they, them, uh, as a singular pronoun is something that we have got to look through our policies. We've done this with some of the ways in which most of our policies are almost always written with a masculine pronoun. And we will reject that, right? That that is not the
Right.
um, approach that we want to take. Um, and I know significant number of students want the ability to use they as a singular pronoun as well.
Well, elsewhere in this policy, it does use they as singular, and I'm okay with that. It's just when you can make it agree without using a, and, and without using a gendered pronoun.
I understand.
And I think I'm pushing it a little further to minimize the use of pronouns altogether and just talk about people.
We caught that. Right, Tricia, you got the change?
Um, I have one other thing.
Yes, page?
Page three, under, uh, under, the heading on page two is Intervention Investigation and Resolution, but it's the third bullet point of that, which is the second bullet point on page three. Starting with the word for providing. The alleged perpetrators, I think we have decided not to use perpetrators.
Um, I completely agree. I just want to make sure I'm aware that there's been significant change in Title Nine language about rights and responsibilities of folks who are making claims and folks who have had claims made about them. So I'm looking to Amanda to make sure that if we change that language that we are keeping with what the current Title Nine expectations are. Also understanding that they may change with a new administration, right? That this is sort of the game that we're, we're in. So Amanda, I don't know if you know what page we're talking about. We're on zero one one five dash R, third page, second bullet point is what we're talking about, so.
I can, I can, I see that, and I think we did make some changes, but I would love to just be able to consult, uh, with Lily and with BS and K, just to ensure. I don't see a problem with that when we talked about it last time. Again, it's just sort of the way that we categorize the person who is, I think we, we actually switched the language and said potential, um, uh, DASSA violation or something like that, right? I think we've worked on that a lot. So maybe this was one we just didn't catch.
Yeah.
So, um, I think we can just do almost like a find all, change all.
Yep.
Yeah.
I support it. I want to make sure that we're not in violation of anything that would invalidate the current Title Nine legislation.
And if I could just further amend slash simplify the, um, the language in that sentence, um, a chance to respond and notifying them, which is singular and plural in this case, we could change that to providing notification that if the objectionable, if objectionable behavior has occurred, it must cease immediately. It would be more syllables, so it's not really simplification.
So Pat, let me hear the full sentence again, please, if I can.
Providing the
Where are we again?
Same bullet.
The same bullet point.
Oh.
Providing the whatever alleged perpetrator changes to a chance to respond and providing notification that if objectionable behavior has occurred, that it must cease immediately.
So my only, this is why I love, again, policy and language. Does the second that need to be included if we do that? You can just say it must cease immediately?
I, I think, okay, providing the whatever, a chance to respond and notification.
And providing notification.
Notification that if objectional behavior has occurred, that it must cease immediately.
You're right, the second that is not necessary, right.
All right, Tricia, we're going to repeat it one more time to make sure we're on the same page. Providing the term that we have identified for potential perpetrators or offenders, a chance to respond and providing notification that if objectional behavior has occurred, it must cease immediately.
Yes, yeah.
We can delete the second that.
Okay.
All right, that, um, additional comments, changes, edits. Um, and I should, again, make notification that I've had the privilege of reading this policy seventeen, eighteen thousand times, working with our team. So I've already sent forward my grammar, um, as wrong as they may be. Uh, but the, um, actions that we're taking are, um, duly noted and essential to creating a better school community. So if we're good with those two, zero one one five and zero one one five dash R. And again, with acknowledgement that this is putting up for a first reading, trying to bring our policy in line with our current practice, that it would come back to policy committee, we would still have additional time to make edits as we see. And I think the, um, edits in language are essential, um, as we know. So, uh, it wouldn't be the last time that we would have a dialogue or a conversation about this policy. So if we're okay, I'll ask if we are okay with moving zero one one five and zero one one five R forward to the board for a first reading. All in favor? So there we go. We would, we would do, I would presume, all three of those policies. I'm speaking to Ms. Talke, to Dr. Brown, uh, to Ms. Verba. We would do all three of those policies at the same board meeting. We'll identify when we have, um, the appropriate time to engage, uh, again, in recognition that this is already our practice. We're trying to bring our policies up to, uh, up to speed. So, but we should identify all those at the same board meeting. All right, fantastic. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it. We had great joy in having a conversation about our next three policy agenda items. Uh, the policy is policy five, four, two, three, the administering of medication to students. We had a conversation at our last policy committee to have a conversation about policy five, four, two, three dash R, which is the regulation, and then policy five, four, two, three dash P, which would be the procedures. Um, I want to thank our guests here in advance for the amount of work, uh, to try to parse out this language, the practice, the procedure, the policy. So thank you very much. Um, and I don't know if, uh, Dr. Dandali or, um, uh, Carrie, if you want to begin with any, um, setup for this, or you just want us to say yes, we appreciate your labor and your work.
Well, the feeling is mutual. We appreciate yours. We were just commenting on how helpful this process has been to really refine our thinking and, and strive for clarity. Um, and to your point, words do matter. Uh, I would say since the last time we met, we've, we've made the revisions that were discussed in the course of the meeting. Uh, as you alluded to, we, we have read this so many times too, that we can't sometimes identify. I think changes need to be made. So there were some sort of late-breaking, uh, changes largely around punctuation, um, which I'm happy to review.
Um, I don't think we need to review the punctuation changes. Um, I do have some, some, uh, suggestions, um, for the regulation.
Five, four, two, three, dash R.
Right.
If I could, if you, would, could we just hang on the, the policy piece on page one? Just to, I want to highlight the changes that remain that were not punctuation limited.
Okay.
But that's okay. So in the second paragraph, uh, it would be the third line.
Carrie, I apologize. Um, where are we beginning at right now?
First page policy.
The policy, the actual policy, yep.
So the second paragraph, third line, what we, was happening here is we reordered clauses of the sentence to make it clear. So it reads parental guardian permission is required for all students, uh, to receive medication during school hours unless the student, the student is an emancipated minor. Originally the emancipated minor part was in the middle and it just didn't read, get great clarity. Um, similarly with the next sentence, starting with apparent guardian must bring the medication to the school nurse. Along with required documentation as outlined in policy five, four, two, three, R. Unless the student has provider orders and parent guardian consent to carry and self administer medication on file. And so again, similarly, we just changed the order of the clauses for, for greater clarity. The last paragraph, the third paragraph, beginning with comprehensive regulations. It reads comprehensive really regulations governing the administration of medication to students. It originally read administering medication, so corrected that language. That was all for policy on the first page. Thank you.
Uh, before we move forward, let's just give it a second for board members to read and make sure that. I appreciate those changes. Pat, more?
Looks good.
Looks good, yes.
Fantastic.
I read it earlier.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
The dash R.
Should I go ahead with please? Okay, so um, in the first paragraph, under definitions, nurse dependent. Um, I am suggesting that, let me see, so um. Let me see, uh, where is it? Okay. Okay, student, I'm suggesting a rewording. Students who cannot self administer their own medication. And do not, and who do not meet the criteria for uh supervised students. Listed below are therefore dependent on another person administering the medication to them.
Can I ask why?
Um, I thought it was confusing to and to say. And cannot be considered in need of supervision according to the criteria for supervised students. Uh, I think just say who, who do not meet the criteria. For supervised students listed below. That makes sense?
Yes.
So that was one.
Thank you.
And then I think in that same item, uh, maybe not, let's see.
Well, to that point.
Or maybe it's under supervised stu- uh, let's see, there's a comma.
But before we go there, my apologies, that same par- that same section of definitions, the very next sentence. Where it says these, my apology, I know, I realize people can't hear me. These nurse dependent students must have. Do we need the word these? Can we just say nurse dependent students must have?
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, that's good.
I was also
And then, yes.
I, I was also wondering whether we. Might want to change the order of these three and have the nurse dependent students. Below supervised students, either below supervised students or below independent students. Because it's. And then we don't have to say listed below, but we could, we can start with supervised students. And then independent students, a student who meets criteria for a supervised student. And then put nurse dependent students as the third category.
Well, that raises a question for me and I'm sure for other board members. Do you see these in some form of hierarchical level? Is, is there, and what is that level? What would that level be?
Then most dependent to most independent, but I don't see a reason why we couldn't flip flop them.
I was just thinking if, if the definition for both nurse de- for nurse dependent students. Depends on reading the criteria, criteria for supervised students. It makes sense to put it somewhere below that.
I would add though, um, the independent student definition references the supervised student, so.
Well, they, they both do, and so I would say supervise, supervised starts. Then independent for students who meet the criteria for that and then nurse dependent for students who don't meet the criteria.
I mean, I hear what you're saying, but I guess I'm stuck on the idea that as it is now. It's most dependent to least dependent and that makes sense to me.
That makes sense to me too. And Cause otherwise we're going from most dependent, this is not dependent at all to sort of dependent. Or vice versa.
Yeah.
I withdraw my friendly amendment.
That's, that's good. So thank you for that. That helps us as well understand the process of what's taking place.
And then still in that section, there's just a, uh, in the bullet points, the bullet point.
Supervised students, bullet points.
Right, supervised students, bullet points. And in the middle of that, the sentence that starts or the bullet points that starts with know the parameters. Um, you need to delete a comma after. Uh, is to be taken. That comma after taken is not necessary.
Uh, let me make sure I understand. Um, the bullet point that says know the parameters.
Right.
It's the last part of that bullet point, right? Ranges that are acceptable to take a medication.
No, 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 it's before, it's part of the same sentence of know the parameters.
Is to be taken.
Is to be taken and, cause it's not a compound sentence.
Tricia, that bullet point, know the parameters, do you see that? Under which the medication is to be taken. There's a comma after that. We're gonna delete that comma. Fantastic. There may be more, but we're gonna start there.
Thank you.
And I need a refresher on what a compound sentence is, but we'll get.
Compound sentence.
No, not now, not now, no. Fantastic, fantastic. Um, additional edits.
I have some things for under independent.
Yes, please.
Okay, the first sentence, independent, uh, under independent students. A student who meets criteria for supervised students and can self administer their own medications without any insisted assistance. Is considered an independent student. Uh, wait, I, what, what do my notes say here? Um, okay. Alright, as who meets criteria and self, without it is considered, okay. These students may be kept in the health office for the student to obtain and administer. This is due to the school's need, okay, great. An independent student with a self carry order. Okay, then I, I don't know what I wanted to say here. Except for. Maybe, I don't know, sorry.
No.
I don't know, I don't understand my own notes.
I, I, I think I am. I am unclear how you differentiated between independent students who have to go to the nurse's office. And independent students who can self carry.
Well, they have a self carry order and I think that, you know, a self carry order from a physician. Correct, maybe add from a physician.
So there are students who could be considered independent who don't have self carry orders.
Right.
Uh, I would say by and large, many of our students who fall into the category of independent student do have self carry orders. And that in many ways reflects the work that nurses do when we're talking about increased independence. To educate students around their, their health concerns or health conditions and their management. To get them to the point where, you know, as secondary students that they have these medications available to them. Now, of course, it can depend on the type of medication, controlled substances, it might be a different matter. There are all sorts of considerations around students uh maturity, inability to, to be responsible. So those are all taken in, into consideration. Certainly, a student who has a self carry order can then become an independent student who can't self carry. And vice versa.
So I want to make sure that we have captured that last part correctly, so. What I'm hearing, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that um I would assume in your world, the idea of a self carry order is self explanatory. For someone who's not in your world, a self carry order from a physician. Adds specificity that we may want in a policy that may come back our way at some other point in time. Is, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, I guess.
Is, is our self carry orders always written by a physician or does the nurse ever make that determination?
Always written by a physician.
Then we should, I think we should include that language.
Yes, so that the parent doesn't write a self carry order.
Right.
Right.
Right, just, just to specify to make sure we're all on the same page.
Yeah, the orders include a place for physicians or other prescribers to designate that they have the ability to self carry. And then what the parent is effectively doing, the parent or guardian is consenting to. I agree with the physician, my child is.
And that's mentioned later in the policy, that is clear, but I think just adding from a physician. In this sentence would.
Sometimes we're trying to remove the redundancy, other times it's actually very helpful for us to make sure that we're being specific. I'll see G O to see if I'm talking to the mic correctly, so I think I'm good. Additional items or corrections or suggestions?
I have something.
I, I did not have a chance to look these over beforehand, but. Does it, does it make any sense to provide the administrative guidelines? In advance of talking about the three ways that students relate to them?
Um, I think we talked about this before.
We did.
And we ended up switching it up.
That's right.
Because the administrative guidelines, I think, make reference to the different categories. And so we decided that it needed, the definitions needed to come. Either I missed that day or memory fails me. Memory often fails me, I'll tell you.
But this is also the idea of trying to break it down into three different separate policies, right? The regulation, the procedure, to make sure we can try to clarify as most, as much as possible.
And when my daughter says, I told you that, which she does often, I say, yeah, I guess I forgot. It's gonna happen more and more often, so get used to it.
Well, that's why YouTube exists, so. Additional.
Yeah, I have.
Comments, references, additions, yes.
You know how, uh, under um administration guidelines, uh, you know, we don't like. We like to get rid of repetitions, so. In, on page three, um, in the first paragraph that shows up on page three. Uh, in the middle of it, and it says, okay. Um, must, a parents must provide a completed medication order. Signed by a licensed healthcare provider along with a signed request by the parent guardian requesting the medication. How about along with a signed form by the parent and guardian requesting the administrate, the medication be administered? To get rid of request requesting.
Yes, uh, Melissa and Carrie, do you see what we're talking about on page three?
Mm-hmm, first paragraph.
Thoughts about that change? Is it a, I, is it a form? Is it an order? Is it? Just trying to make sure I, I also understand.
Yeah, the, that's a great question. The orders that we receive from uh healthcare offices typically include a space. Where the parent would sign, so there's often a consent section embedded into the orders that we receive.
So for that, is it possible to change the first request to a different noun? Am I using correct, it's not a compound sentence.
So it's now.
So, so the parents.
But it can also be.
The parents are not signing a, a separate form, they're signing the order.
They may, they may sign a separate, depending on the provider's office. The orders may come with that, with that piece of it attached, other times they don't. So we have our own internal form, so it could be signing the orders, it could be signing our own internal form based on the provider's office.
Do you have suggestions about language that?
With a, a, along with a signature by the parent guardian requesting the medication be administered.
Mm-hmm, or a signed request by the parent guardian that medication be administered? Cause it's.
That would work.
It's a signed request in some form.
Right.
A signed request requesting that is redundant.
Yes, right, a signed request by the parent or guardian that the medication be administered as instructed. By the licensed healthcare, that's, that works too.
I'm looking to our medical professionals, how does that?
Fine, I think. It covers us.
Fantastic, fantastic.
I, Carrie and I were talking a little bit on the side though about adding another possible bullet. After we looked at this a thousand times, it's come up a couple of times.
Yes.
Is, um, the one medication we really don't want students carrying is our controlled substances. And I've been asked a number of times for field trips to have students carry that, so I would like to add a bullet and maybe uh.
This is on page three?
Yes.
Where like date order issued, like in a bullet in there, is that what you're talking about?
Maybe, or wherever we think the bullet should go about controlled substances should in. There's some wording in the state guidance, I can't remember what it was, but I'll pull it up. Um, should basically should not be allowed. And except for in exceptional circumstances, but I would like.
Say, are there, are there exceptions where that happens?
I can't think of one, except for maybe someone carrying a um, like a anti seizure medication.
How, how did you know what my question was gonna be?
Cause it was the same question I asked her when she brought it up. Um, right, so in some cases with seizure disorder, students are very familiar with like with the onset of seizure looks like. And they're able to, to respond to it and maybe even self medicate without the assistance of an adult. It really depends, it really depends. So you could.
But it's really rare. Most of the times, like if there's a, a student with a seizure disorder in a building. And there's no nurse, then and there's no one that can be trained to administer that and so what nine one one is just called.
So we're looking to add a bullet that in essence says, we don't want folks carrying their own controlled substances.
Yes.
Without exceptional circumstances.
Right, and that maybe at the discretion of the medical director, this way we have the ability to allow it if there's some circumstance.
So would it be okay with our policy committee members that we ask for that bullet point language outside of the committee? To be added to the draft that we're doing for.
Go under independent student?
Yes, yeah, because that's when we're being asked, we're asked for field trips. For people that be carrying their ADHD medication and it, it protects our students too.
Right.
They're not gonna be pressured, so.
So we don't, so if it's going under that, that um paragraph for independent students. I don't think, since that paragraph doesn't have bullet points, I think you just add that on as a sentence.
Okay, yeah, I think so too.
Okay.
Oh, we're getting squeezed for time, yep. Oh, we go to six thirty.
Maybe.
Maybe.
We'll, we'll figure this out.
I mean, but our, we're scheduled.
We are.
We are scheduled, oh, okay.
Um, so you would, Pat, if I heard correctly, you're asking to add that sentence or some form of that sentence. Under independent students formerly known as self administrator, self carry students.
Well, I would, I would say that. You could put it under administration guidelines if you're identifying the, the independent students. But I, I don't know that a bullet point saying what kind of medication should not be.
Right. No, I, I think what you said before, add it just as a sentence under independent students. Because it's only applicable to independent students, that this is an exception to what. Independent students can do.
Alright, good folks, I think I'm hearing two different things. I want to make sure that we have some sort of agreement and yielding to our medical professionals. One is adding that sentence to independent students, understanding that there are, there will be exceptional times. Where independent students will be carrying controlled. Where independent students will be carrying controlled substances. We are using epilepsy as an example, but it could be other conditions as well. The other would be under administration guidelines of adding a bullet point about students who are independent to carry. And so I'm yielding to you to see if you have a preference or a suggestion about where would be the best place to add that language. Did I capture that correctly?
I would, uh, just, just point out, um, on the bottom of page three, I believe it is, administration by unlicensed personnel does talk about this. Um, the second paragraph, first bullet. Uh, discusses secondary student, high school, or an elementary student in exceptional circumstances may have permission to self medicate under the following conditions. The medication is not a controlled substance.
But what if it is a controlled substance?
I actually can't think of it, I can't. Can you think of a case where we've allowed? Someone to can, I, I don't, I can't.
That one you've been asked.
No, because in most cases what we're doing. For example, if they're going off campus, it's either a caregiver is going, they've designated another adult. Who can go and carry that medication, or a nurse is going, so it's. I, this, it would be like beyond exceptional, I can't even.
But I've had multiple doctor's notes written saying that they can self carry, and then.
We push back on those.
As much as possible, I'd like to front load some of this conversation, we regularly find ourselves that we pass a policy. We hadn't thought about this scenario or that scenario, that we have to go back and we review it. So I think I would prefer adding that language if we can find a place for it that's appropriate. We may not be able to envision it in this moment, but I, I think we'd be hard pressed to say that there won't be a scenario. Where an independent student will have the permission to self medicate with a controlled substance with all the appropriate documentation. Am I wrong in, in saying that?
Yeah, I think.
You said, you shook your head and said, yeah, and I'm, I'm thoroughly confused.
I can't find a situation where I would think it would be a good idea for our students to carry their own controlled substance.
Okay. So leave the policy as is currently, that's what I'm hearing.
I, I think what Dr. Nadali is alluding to, that we've had requests, but at every instance, we've been able to mitigate that. Either providing staff, appropriate staffing, or asking the provider to, to rewrite the orders. We haven't had occasion where we've had to do that.
Board colleagues, questions, thoughts about that?
If, if you're getting requests from physicians that a student be able to self medicate a controlled substance, I think it's worth a sentence. In here somewhere that. That. Independent students will not be approved to.
Carry.
Carry controlled substances. Except under extraordinary circumstances.
Well, that, that last part would be key, though, cause I don't think that's what we're saying.
You're not saying.
I don't think we're saying that.
I think we should leave an extraordinary circumstance in there, cause it's in the New York State stuff, and also I don't wanna say never, because. Just because I can't think of it, doesn't mean it won't happen.
That's the part that I was trying to get at, like to. Write a policy forward, thinking that just because you don't have a situation now, doesn't mean it will never happen.
And I would like to add, like, upon approval by medical director or something, so they know that.
Right.
We can say no, even if the parent or the, the physician.
That would make me feel very comfortable if it said, that language upon approval by medical director would make me feel much more comfortable.
Yes.
In those circumstances.
Me too.
No, this one's I could do, this one, I got. You'll be getting texts, or you might be.
Tricia, I followed about seventy eight percent of what we just talked about, so I'm gonna ask you to follow up with Carrie and Melissa to make sure that we find the appropriate place for that. Before we put it on any board agenda. Is that okay? Does that work for my board colleagues as well?
Yes.
Any additional changes, edits, grammar?
Yeah, well, I sort of have.
Yeah.
A question that would probably lead to a change under administration by unlicensed personnel. So a district employee who is not a school nurse may volunteer to administer medications. If the school nurse is not available under the following conditions. The student is designated a supervised student, self directed. So then the unlicensed person is not administering the, the. The medication, the unlicensed person is supervising the, the administration.
Yeah, although I guess it sort of depends on how you define administer, cause even in those cases, what, what, um, the adult is doing is. The student has to be knowledgeable about what dosing they receive, but the, the, the adult's the one accessing the cabinet, opening the bottle.
Okay.
Reviewing, you know, confirming the, the administration includes confirming the student's identity, things of that nature, so. Um, at least in our mindset, it's how we conceive of. A medication administration, as you could see from the, the detail that around the, the procedure is, is a multi step process.
Right.
Does that answer your question more?
Yeah, 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 I just, when I'm reading it, it's like, they're not administering it if the student's administering it or is so, yeah. But I guess that's.
Yeah, I think I read it as a self directed or student may still have the authority to, but it may be administered by somebody else.
Yeah, I think in most cases, the person is not handing them the whole bottle, but sort of taking the two bottles out and handing them.
That's right.
Yeah. Uh, and then, I was gonna show you one other thing. Uh, well, this is under the P part of it.
Yes.
Under security, it's just. Uh. Let's see, let me go, um, okay. Verify, this is the first sentence.
Yes.
Bullet point under security, verify that information under the original pharmacy labeled. Container or manufacturer's package and the medication order signed by a licensed health provider match, so we need that, that.
So the very first bullet point, verify that the original pharmacy labeled container.
Matches, yeah.
Yes.
That's it.
That's on page five?
That is on page five, yes.
The bullet point, I'm looking to our medical professionals, if you see the recommendation and we're good with that? I'll see this.
But just to complicate things a little bit, is, is, we need to work.
No, we don't have to, we don't, no, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So, so, um, the labels on the pharmacy don't always match the name of the child? And so, and our medical record. Since the children can change to their, their preferred name, sometimes the labels don't match the name, so it gets more complicated. But that's just for us to know, I know that's all over the country, this is happening.
And what do we do about that?
We match pictures, we, the new New York State forums have a preferred name and gender signed at birth on them. But the EMRs don't necessarily do that, so Carrie and has been working to fix that.
And we, we use two, two elements to prove identity, so it's not restricted to name, but we also ask and inquire about date of birth.
So, i- in that regard, so that's very helpful, thank you, right, that it provides a level of depth and complexity that we have to continually. Consider about students and experience and the way in which we are being inclusive and affirming. But, and I, what I hear is that the idea would be to verify that the original, as opposed to on the original. That does not change things much in your world, right, it just makes it more grammar friendly in, in our world, but. So we're okay with that change?
Uh, also, that semicolon after match.
Should be another.
We don't need it.
Don't need, okay.
Just don't need that cell, so.
Yep. Tricia, did you catch that? The first bullet point where it says verify that the original pharmacy labeled container. Or manufacturer's package and the medication order signed by a licensed healthcare professional match and without any punctuation. That both apply to the child in question. You learn a lot through policy.
Yeah.
Additional edits, questions, comments? No, I read it, I'm looking forward to, I would hope that you would both be available for the board, I'm not sure that the board would have. Additional conversations, but in case they do, right, that's the whole point of having different perspectives that we'd be available to take a look at this. And I may ask you all to give like a three minute introduction to about wh- how this came about, why we're doing this. That may provide the board and the public additional context as well.
I, um, I do, we, you wanna, there was comment last time about, um, restorative processes around this. And even the fact that the policy alludes to potential termination of employment. The first, uh, piece beyond sort of notifying all necessary parties and ensuring the child's safety. Would be to, to conduct a root cause analysis, right, and to really get at. A, understanding of how we got to this place, root cause analysis is something that's really common in healthcare. Uh, it recognizes that, uh, errors, clinical errors are often the result of systems. Um, and failures in those systems, and so that always is our intent and our approach around this work. But we wanna reserve the right to terminate people because of the very serious. Uh, consequent, consequences that can emanate from, uh, uh, misuse of, or mishandling of medications, particularly by staff. And so that's, um, not that, I understand that. The language may be concerning, uh, but we wanna make clear what this can rise, the level it can rise to if in fact there is a serious concern uncovered. And I know, I don't know if that's typical of other policies, but.
No, I appreciate the response, cause I think I was the person that raised that, um, and I understand the idea that we want options available. To us that include this as well, given the serious nature and, um, and this policy in particular, uh, and I. Don't say this lightly, we are literally talking about life and death, so, um, there's a grave seriousness to this. Uh, board colleagues, reactions, response?
Yeah, I, I think it's fine, I mean, I think it. I think it's. It.
Yep.
It conveys the seriousness of the potential seriousness.
And there may be a way in the second reading that we add language that's something similar to that, that we recognize the gravity of this. Right, so simply, so it's not just saying that we're gonna, we reserve the right to fire you, but given the gravity of the situations that we're. Talking about, that this is also on the table as well, but we'll, we have time to do that between the first reading and the second reading and adoption.
Other question we had was on the, um, second to last paragraph, this sentence, the second sentence that says. The Director of Health Services and Wellness will, will conduct a root cause analysis and shall notify the superintendent of schools or their designee, blah, blah, blah. Um, the one thing that happens with root cause analysis is that a lot of times, uh, processes and procedures are then changed. Is that, do we need to add a sentence or a bullet that, or something that says that. Based on this, we will change the way we do things, or is that just implied?
Say that, that last part again?
I've got it, we could just say, um, add on to what's here. About concerns regarding the administration of medication to students which may require administrator verboor review and. Modification.
Modification, okay.
Period, which is also missing, that was my one.
Right.
Catch for this time.
It was waiting for that ending phrase.
So does that, does that answer your question? Doc? Um, and the only thing I would say is we've been trying, you know, talk about. Pronouns and in regards to that second sentence, I don't think we need their designee. I think we've been saying notify the superintendent of schools or designee. Is what the language that we've been trying to use more and more often, and we know we're not all the way there, but that's what we've been saying. Fantastic. Um, again, this is, uh, you know, it's seven pages of language, uh, and at the same point in time, significant. And, uh, does not capture the amount of work that was put in and thought and consideration about practice, policy and procedure, so. I am greatly appreciative to the work that, uh, you both have done, so thank you greatly.
Thank you.
Thank you, this has been.
Yeah, and I'll thank you even more once we pass it and actually make it a policy, uh, and we do have a policy number for it, right? We do five, four, two, three, we, that we've confirmed, great.
Do we get to move on to a reading?
Um, we will, we will notify folks when it will be on the board agenda for a reading, we hope it will be soon. Uh, but yes, it will, well, Moira's not here, you can ask Pat and I. Pat, with the modifications, I am fine with this being moved to the board for a first reading, how about yourself?
I feel equally confident.
It is passed committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are making progress, y'all. Thank you so much, greatly appreciate it, fantastic, fantastic. Uh, that'll move us to our next agenda item, I'm being mindful of time that we have fifteen minutes left, one is, the next policy is. Policy two, three, five, zero, uh, board meeting procedures. We've been having some form of conversation about this for a while, about the structure and content of board meetings. And the ways in which to schedule these, um, and the way that's most conducive to all stakeholders. And so we put it back up after a conversation from our last meeting. Um, we've been modifying it at some points in time to have special presentations go first. Um, in recognition of, uh, young people, for example, we've had fourth graders present to us. Second graders present to us, teachers present to us, that we are hoping that they would be able to present, and then we can let them get some rest for the following day. Uh, there were, um, other requests, uh, from committees, from communities, from teachers, from board members. About having, uh, public comment lead the meeting, um, whether we should do exec first. Um, you name it, we've been involved in a number of conversations. What I will say is that the, um, current structure that we have. Um, did not come about lightly, we've been involved in this dialogue, I wanna say for at least six, seven years that I've been on the board. Um, and one was that there are times when holding an executive session. Prior to some of the other agenda items have been helpful for board members to be informed. Um, there are other times when making sure that the public knows exactly when public comment is, will be known. A caveat, I say it each time, I am not recommending this, and I wanna repeat. I am not recommending this, that no elected legislative body is required to have a public session. A public comment as part of their agenda. There are some school districts that don't have public comment at all, or it's at the end of their agenda. We have been very, um, diligent about making sure that we hear from the public and putting it at the front end of our agenda. And so there is no set dialogue, no set agenda, just. Should we take a look at it, see what we do, see what we can do, see what we should do? And so, um, I open it to board colleagues about responses, comments, suggestions.
And.
Wherever we find ourselves.
Specifically, uh, what, just about what our policy says now about.
Yeah, about two, three, five, zero, to see if our policy actually matches our practice.
Well, I'll tell you what, it doesn't, um, well, first of all, like, it says attendance, but I mean, do we do attend it? I mean, I guess.
Attendance really means do we have a quorum?
Right, okay.
Right, and if we have a quorum, then that's attendance and we keep it moving, so it is done, but it's not explicit.
Okay, and since COVID, we have not done the pledge of allegiance, and yet it sits here on our agenda, and we haven't done it in three years.
That is correct.
Um, and there's no requirement that we do it. And so my suggestion is, unless we wanna start doing it, let's take it off the agenda. And there's not even a flag in this room, so. Is there supposed to be?
Um, which is, um, quasi ironic, it's not connected exactly to what we're talking about here. But the last time I was in this room, it was during social justice week. Where a student who is a member of the Hauda'wah'ni Nation asked why we don't fly a Six Flags Nation flag on our schools as well.
Right.
So I raised that in essence to say that if we are gonna place flags in the rooms that we are having our board presentations and board meetings. For me, that would have to be part of the conversation, not that we need to do or should do it. But we at least have to have the conversation about if that's something that we wanna do. So I think one item would be to have, I would recommend whatever we put forward to the board is not a recommendation, but a conversation. A question about saying the pledge of allegiance, um, since it's on our agenda and we have not done it since COVID, you are absolutely right.
All right. And then, I mean, there are, I, I did a little research about this, you know, there are, as I understand it, you know. You know, there are, as I understand it, you know, uh, there's ed law that, that, uh. That mandates pledge of allegiance in New York State schools with students during the school day. There's nothing that I could find that says it's necessary to do at, at a meeting.
And I just want to make sure I clarify that correctly if I'm wrong. There's ed law that states you have to provide the opportunity. For people to say the pledge of allegiance, but there is no requirement that students have to participate in the pledge of allegiance. Um, but I think.
And there's been recently, I think, you know, some more, I'm not sure it's New York State, but maybe in another state on, on the.
And we may also.
Court cases about it, yeah.
So one would be a dialogue about the pledge of allegiance and the opportunity to make sure that folks would have that honor or privilege if they so choose.
Right.
One would be about public comment, should that be front loaded at the meeting, so. Community members would know when public comment is. Before, we had separated just some general history, we separated public comment from student resp-.
Right.
Student, um, bo- board member responses. Um, intentionally to make sure that we had a separation for different board responses.
Right.
If they so choose. Um, the idea of special presentations is not currently, I mean, it is on the agenda as item, agenda item, which would be number. Seven, this has got a little bit of, uh, difference in numbering. Um, if that's something that we would want to still consider, if we have teachers coming to us to present, to, again, if we have. Second graders, which has happened before, do we want them to lead the conversation? Um, that's part of it, and, um, if folks notice that nowhere on the current agenda does it mention executive session. And large part because my understanding of New York State ed law is the board can enter into executive session. Anytime after the meeting has been called to order. For the past number of years, we've entered into executive session to begin the meeting if the board so chooses. To have additional information that may or may not apply to what is being on the agenda. So we brought it up to the board as, as a discussion item, not as a voting item, I want to say maybe. Six months ago, seven months, maybe it's longer than that. My public memory is not the best. It's about six months ago, as a discussion item.
Yeah.
And we didn't get too far about in terms of what recommendations there may be. Maybe this is an idea where we send it out as. Get some feedback from folks, maybe a survey of some sort before we do anything, just to see. Uh, I'm open to either, to be honest. Um, I think I'd like to hear what board members think, because the process of the. We've said this repeatedly to community members, to the students, to our teachers, to other board members. It is difficult because board mea- board meetings are not designed for a dialogue. Um, this is across the state, board meetings are designed to engage in the business of the board. So I think maybe starting with the board may be most helpful. And then proceeding from there. I did get feedback from some board members, thank you very much for the emails that I received, I greatly appreciate that. But I'm trying to figure out what is the best approach to make sure that we are trying to be responsive.
Yeah, maybe a survey of the board, I think, to begin with. Um, I would also say in terms of, you know, an issue that came up. At one of the sessions that I went to at NISMIA that, uh, in a, a number of board. You know, officers who were in this session when we were talking about, um, public comment and board response says. They do not respond at all. Um, and, you know, I'm not sure that that would work for, for us at all. But just, you know, to, to talk about, um. Our approach to response. Um, might be a good idea.
I'm also wondering, Professor, this is a topic that can be done during a development session. Because it is about how the board will work together to do its business. In addition to a survey, we could probably discuss it outside of a policy.
Right, so I think I, I, I'm in complete agreement because it does have an impact on board governance, right? This is one of the ways in which we got to this current one, and while we made changes in two thousand and twenty-one. Um, it was more about the separation of, um, public comment and student board rep comment. That was the only change in essence that we made. Um, so that part I think would be, um, good for, uh, whatever, uh, future board, uh, looks like to have that conversation about board governance. Um, I know that I hear repeatedly from community members that want to speak at the board, and I agree that we would not be a community. That would want to remove public comment.
Right.
Though I'm very much aware of numerous, both central and western New York school districts that do not. Have public comment on their board agendas or put it at the end of their agenda. Um, but it would raise some questions about can we have a much more definitive time as we've heard from. Teachers, if we've heard from students and caregivers as well about what that looks like. So if I'm hearing correctly, what we'll do is we will, um, the conversation for this evening is that we will find a time during a board. Uh, development session to have this conversation, um, particularly because it does involve board governance. And that would be the way in which we would engage it. Is that what I'm hearing from board committee members? And we will continue to get feedback from, um, committee, uh, board members as well about what's the best approach. And we will revisit this, um, as soon as, as possible.
Also, what, I know what it means when you're talking about the score of a musical, but what does reprise mean? On a board agenda?
Please correct me if I'm wrong, I thought it was reprize.
Well, I've always pronounced it reprise.
And that's why I said, correct me if I'm.
I don't know, maybe I'm wrong, or maybe it could go either way.
It can go either way. Um, I do not know what it means, and there's an example where it may be something that we, you know, that we've had from. I don't know, when was the policy originally?
I never noticed it before now, uh, looking at this, I never noticed it.
Yeah. So again, a conversation for a board development session to, uh, be discussed at a policy committee sometime soon. And we may even with this policy. Thank, thank you YouTube. Um, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna continue to use my, uh, African-American English and say reprize, and we'll, we'll go from there. Uh, we'll bring it back to the committee, to the community as soon as possible. To the community, please know it's something that we are actively considering and discussing. Um, we understand the nuances of the board meetings and how difficult it is, no matter where you may find yourself on the agenda. Uh, it also reminds me of something that Dr. Lavell Brown said, if you can find me the perfect calendar, please let me know. If you can find me the perfect board agenda, please let me know, and we'll try to do our best to sort of match that. Um, the last agenda item is something that I added, and it was not necessarily that we would get to it today, it's more to make sure that it's in the minutes. To have a conversation about visitors to the school. Um, it also includes a conversation about volunteers at school district events. Uh, organizations or communities, and so, um, the conversation was not just about revisiting our. Visitors to schools and any liability or suggestions or re- um, things that we may require, but also then also. Concurrently with that, about what does it mean to volunteer at the school? And that would include things like PTA reps, reading and classrooms. Um, it would include a whole host of things, so we have to give serious consideration. I have reached out to our legal team to begin some of these dialogues. I know some other folks have as well, but I would imagine that if we look at five, three, zero, zero, point, six, five. There would probably also be a five, three, zero, zero, point, six, six that would go along with that. And we just want to make sure it's in the notes that it's something that we're actively looking into as we speak at this time. Any other comments? Questions, additional business for my policy committee colleagues?
I'm, I'm so tempted to ask YouTube about tomato versus tomato.
We will send that your way.
But, but I'm, I'm not, I'm not gonna change how I say it.
But do you say reprize or reprise?
I've heard reprise, but there are words that I've mispronounced because I had only read them in books. And it was only until I got more involved in music, so I figured reprise was the correct way. But when I was reading and not hearing it.
Yep.
I would, I was in my mind saying reprized.
So I do see, uh, board members showing me the time that we are closing in, and what I will say is that reprise may be the correct way. But reprize is not incorrect.
Okay.
So with that being said.
Yes.
We will bring our meeting to close. Thank you all very much. Look forward to you all enjoying your HR committee meeting and we'll talk soon.